This is WROK.
Welcome, everyone, to the new home of Royal Oak City Hall. It's great to have you all here. Glad to see some folks have showed up tonight, especially during these challenging times. Although we're in a new building, we'll still run the same processes that we did a number of months ago. And so, we're grateful for your presence here tonight. I'm grateful for our commission and our city staff for helping make this happen here tonight. We do pre-apologize if there's any moments of technical issues or things of that nature. This is our first time up here as well. We didn't do a dry run, but it looks like all the technology's working. And just ahead of time, a little bit of patience and grace will go a long way in the event that we have to pause and fix a glitch. So, I'm going to call to order the Monday, July 26, 2021 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to begin with a roll call, since it's on the agenda, but I'm not sure we actually have to do it this evening, but in the event that we had to do a Zoom meeting as opposed to a live meeting. So, I'm going to start. Mayor Mike Fournier, here in lovely Royal Oak. Commissioner Dubac?
Hi, Mr. Dubac.
Charlie Douglas, present.
Monica Hunt, present.
Ms. Chacolo?
I'm here.
Here, Royal Oak.
Here in Royal Oak.
All right. So, good. We don't want to skip an agenda item. All right. So, we're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Chacolo, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So, I ask, if you can stand, please do so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's quite hard to give the first invocation in this, the fifth building to be called City Hall, as we continue to celebrate our 100th year as a city. Today marks a new beginning for Royal Oak, a beginning that has been long in the making. Our Royal Oak would go through three city halls in our first 30 years of existence. Our next home would service for nearly 70 years. This City Hall is a result of a shared vision, community input, the physical labor of many, and now we have a City Hall for everyone in our community to use. The construction is coming to an end, and a new two-acre park in the heart of our vibrant downtown is closing in on completion. Our new City Hall is a place where our laboratory of democracy will make progress to improve our city for residents today and for generations to come. The public structure of this place, we come together to solve our problems and overcome challenges. It starts to be a place where residents come to build on the success of the past and help to achieve things we can imagine. Years of vision and planning are finally paying off, and we all benefit from the results. Now, before I go on, I should tell you all a little secret. I am an Olympic fanatic. Since I was a child, I've been in love with the Olympics. I've always been mesmerized watching the world's best come together to compete. But as I grew older, I realized how much more there was to it than just competition. People who were bitter political and geophysical rivals would come together to fiercely compete, and they'd shake each other's hands and listen to the anthem of the winner. They would cheer each other on and prop up those who've fallen. The Olympics really represent the best in this world, a world where differences are set aside, and you simply compete for the best. As you're open to this City Hall, I pray we continue to prop each other up, and that decisions made here continue to be based on one thing, the best results for Royal Oak. There will be disagreements in this chamber, for hardly is there ever an absolute right or an absolute wrong answer to an issue. No, life is much more nuanced than that. Leadership is setting aside our differences and working together, remembering that we all here as neighbors for the people of Royal Oak. So, tonight, as we celebrate City Hall, the people of Royal Oak, and the idea that we can do great things together to make positive changes and make Royal Oak a better place for everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Chacolo, for that inaugural invocation. Well done. All right. That brings us to Item 5 on the Agenda, which is Approval of the Agenda. Is there a motion for the approval of the Agenda?
I don't have approval.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Our first vote in a long time. That wasn't a roll call. See if I can get used to that. All right. That brings us to Item 6, which is Public Comment. Just a few things about public comment before we begin. I know it's been different the last number of months where we've done call-in public comment here live. We're going back to the traditional way of doing it under the rules that the commission put together. So, just a couple of things here to remind everyone, for those who might be a little rusty as to how public comment works. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, both on the Agenda or not. As there are no public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting, this will be the only time for the public to address the City Commission. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, come up to the podium. For the record, we'll ask you to state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak, so comments are limited to three minutes or less, and there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. Please note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address questions when the Agenda topic is discussed or referred to the proper city department if the matter isn't scheduled on the Agenda this evening. Staff are also taking notes and will look into matters as needed. If you do not wish to speak tonight, that's all right. Please don't hesitate at any time to email or call the City Commission with your comments. All right. So, who's going to be first tonight to do the inaugural opening up of public comment? I see a fine young gentleman here. Looks to be Mr. Ellison.
Yeah, yeah.
Former Mayor Ellison and State Rep. Jim Ellison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Commission. I have no big issue to talk about tonight, other than the fact that here we are. 18 years ago, I made a promise on my first speech as mayor of this city that before my term was over, we would have a new City Hall. I missed it by about four and a half years, but the satisfaction is nonetheless. We have got a beautiful facility. It's taken a lot of hard work by a lot of people so that we can finally be and display who we are as a community with the elite and have the facilities. We've got this. We've got the police station. We've got all the fire stations. We are a city that is far ahead of where I was back in 2003. We started with nothing, and now we have a lot. And I just want to compliment all of you. It's a good feeling to be in this building finally, and I thank you for letting me go first. It's a personal satisfaction that I can go, okay, job done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison, and thank you for all your help making this happen. Is that Mr. Ashley I see in the purple shirt? Come on up, sir.
Good evening. My name is Alan Ashley. I'm president of Royal Oak Manor. I'd like to update you on what's happening over at Royal Oak Manor. We are about 45% done with our renovations inside and out. Outside, we have redone and refenced the Williams Street parking lot, which is going to be expanded even more later on. We've chopped down some trees that were blocking residents' views, giant pine trees that all the residents could see was pine tree, nothing else. So, those are gone. All the apartments have been renovated with new kitchens, cabinets, hoods, new bathroom fixtures. Pull cords have been added. We are going to be adding new heating and cooling units in there. Our office has been moved to near the front. We have the service coordinators have been moved, so all the office is done. The first floor is pretty much gutted and being rebuilt. Outside, they have started painting, and don't ask me what the colors will be, because I'm not going to tell you.
Thought I could throw you off at the podium. We thought we could throw you off at the podium.
No, no, no. Also, we are converting 13 apartments to ADA.
Good.
So, they'll be all that. Also, during this whole time, no resident was ever moved out of the apartment complex. We moved them to what we unrented rooms, which we called hospitality suites. So, they were all in there. Most of the apartments were done within one day of renovating, so they came in at like 6:30 in the morning, and boom, boom, they charged through. So, all the apartments done then. That's the first phase. The other phases are new heating units, finish up the pull cords and stuff. First floor completely renovated. We're going to have some couple of lounges, new weight room and stuff, a new sundry place where we can sell items for that. But other than that, I'm going to say that all through this, we've had some problems with parking, and I want to give a thanks to the police department, especially Sergeant Tyco. He's helped us a lot with the parking, and we're going to need it again later on when we do the parking in the Main Street side. So, I really appreciate all the work that the police department has done for us, and if there's any questions you want to ask me about the renovations, I'll answer what I can. I'm being restricted by CSI, but I'll answer anything that you have that you want to answer.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ashley. Maybe when it's all done, or you feel it's appropriate, you can have us come over.
I was going to say, invite all you guys over and take a look at the new Royal Oak Manor.
That'd be great.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. All right. Ms. Wagman.
Hi, Ms. Diggs. Janice Wagman. First, I'd like to correct the minutes regarding my public comment at the last meeting. My comment about the DDA was COVID gave a perfect opportunity to evaluate the financial impact of the downtown on safety support services. That evaluation may reveal that the DDA should be contributing far more than the $540,000 they currently contribute, especially considering the addition of the social district. Further, I resent a certain commissioner calling my suggestions of possible ways to decrease the taxpayer cost of these services silly. Anytime you can decrease our costs without cutting services, you should, no matter how small. Regarding the parking issue on tonight's Agenda, 31 years ago today, the ADA was established. Today, Detroit announced it is establishing a strategic plan for the disabled, and today, you have a proposal in front of you that could eliminate all handicap parking on Washington and 7th. I attended the MPS presentation and overall really liked the system, although I had some economic concerns long term. I was in favor of it as presented, including installing the meters on Washington and 7th, with the responsibility for ticketing remaining with the police department. This is what was also presented to you and what you approved. As one member of the DDA meeting commission stated perfectly, "It sounds like the changes proposed are better for the city, not better for the people coming to our downtown." Why would we make it more difficult for the people? Although I understand that the police department would like to keep everything uniform, I would like to keep handicap parking in these areas and not make it more difficult for the people. Further, I'm still waiting for the creation of parallel handicap parking on Main Street. As I previously stated, according to my research and a phone call to the ADA, the parking laws pertain to surface parking lots and garages only, not on-street parking. Because they recognize the need, Birmingham, Michigan installed and has maintained many parallel handicap parking spaces in their downtown for several years, and I'm sure their businesses and residents have benefited from that decision, unlike Royal Oak. Finally, with the Silver Tsunamis' growing population of seniors, many of which need handicap parking, our vibrant, progressive downtown should be increasing, not decreasing or eliminating access to the many businesses and restaurants on and near Main Street. After all, disability parking spaces are a matter of equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagman. Who's next? Mr. Karlowski.
Hello, Rick Karlowski. A couple of things from the Agenda. First off, on the downtown angled parking, way back, not too many years ago, when we first put in the bike paths, there was a big discussion regarding the Washington area as to whether we go to parallel parking or angled parking, because angled parking pull-in would have been an issue with people backing out into a street with the bike paths. And now you are proposing people actually back into a spot, which is even worse. There's no, if there's, I would leave it the way it is for now. If you're going to do anything, I realize that parallel parking is going to limit the number of parking spots, and that was also discussed why we kept it the angled parking, even with the bike pass. But the thought of somebody pulling up and then backing in, even with modern technology and rear cameras, is not a good idea if you're sitting there and actually serious about having bikers go up and down Washington. Just not going to work out well. Secondly, with regards to the extension, the emergency order, why? The downtown is wide open. You have people downtown. You're planning for arts beats needs. Why on earth can you not have the City Commission meetings live? There's no reason to even consider this at this point in time. So, I hope that you keep this public venue public and not go back to online comments and video meetings. It's much better to have the people come and speak their minds to you, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karlowski. All right. Who's next? I see Mr. Wolf down here with his hand raised.
Ron Wolf, 333 North Troy Street. I attended the Art Commission meeting, and I feel that repeating what we've done in the past doesn't make any sense in this time of pandemic and unpredictable weather. What's really needed is indoor venues. Maybe, possibly, I've been pushing for a brunch with Bach type of thing called a classical brunch, and it could be a charge for that, and it would help Royal Oak and give residents a break. I would like to see a doorway in front of a library where a baby grand can be wheeled out or played inside. I would like to see two baby grands purchased, one for the library, one for the farmer's market. And I wanted to point out while they were talking about art, that light is also art. It's not just for holiday trees. Look how Rochester uses thousands of lights as an attraction to its city. How about using some of the grant money to surround the Star Dream with changeable spotlights, allowing the sculpture to shine from Maine to Troy? And if that works, it can be made permanent. What I am saying is that we should not just repeat what worked fairly well before the pandemic and when the weather was more predictable. As I informed you, Belle Isle is going to use the LED, new LED technology to colorize its fountain as it once was. I encourage you to consider extending the two-hour meter parking to at least three hours, which would be a great help to our handicapped and seniors. Limit motorcycle meter parking to two motorcycles per meter, and more importantly, posts that finds for moving violations will be doubled in the CBD, and back that up with a police presence. I would like to see the DDA contribute a little more for that presence. The heck with the idea of having to back into angled parking downtown. I'm a senior. My neck isn't too good. I've got stenosis of the cervical bones and whatever. It's hard for us. If they cannot, and if they can't read license plates from cars parallel to the curb, they can read them from the street. If they can't do that, go back to the old system on Washington, placing tickets on the cars. Now, to our mayor and commission, you're not going to like what I'm going to have to say. I have an offer you can refuse, but would be smart to consider. If you donate, all your political donations that you receive from Ron Bulgy and many other special interests, and use those donations to return the memorial, and encourage all your commissioners to do the same, and collectively apologize to our veterans, their families, and place on the Agenda a proposal to change our system over to a full-time, fully-paid, strong mayoral system to attract the best bipartisan fiduciary candidates for the term following the next. That's how our charter operates. It can't be for the next term. It has to be for the following term.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Then I will support you. I promise I will not stand in your way to be reelected. If you could do all of this, I believe we would.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Wolf, your time is up.
Until then, I urge residents not to split their votes for any income.
Mr. Wolf.
No matter how you.
Mr. Wolf, you're out of order.
I was cut off two meetings ago.
Mr. Wolf, you're out of order. Please take a seat. Please take a seat. Okay? It's three minutes for everybody. We'll let you go a little over. Please take a seat. Other people want to speak tonight.
You need to lengthen.
Mr. Wolf, you're out of order.
You need to lengthen public comment.
Mr. Wolf. We have the rules in place to be fair to everybody that showed up here tonight. Mr. Harrison, come on up, please, sir.
Talk about parents. And by the way, City Hall is not as important as us.
Mr. Wolf, please. Thank you.
Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, also known by Pat Curtis, one of the usual suspects. I've got a potpourri of comments here. It's good to see all of you and speak face to face for a change. The Veterans Memorial, your efforts to block the public vote regarding the relocation of the memorial is more evidence of your socialist dictator behavior. Furthermore, your treatment of the memorial, including placing two porta johns adjacent to it, is deplorable. I now see that they have been moved away from the memorial and over by the oak tree where they should have been in the first place. Commissioner Perush asked why another ordinance is necessary to protect the memorial. Let me say, it is in order to keep the memorial from being moved again by any commission to a location further to Troy Street. As I've said before, those memorials have been moved around like a redheaded stepchild until we took action to get them where they were. The intent of the existing ordinance was to protect the original location of the memorial within the dedicated area, but you fly-spect the ordinance and interpreted that alleges otherwise. You need to comply with the judge's order and put the revised ordinance on the ballot for the public to vote on, or just move it back, is the other alternative. Charter member, charter amendments. It's ironic that you are proposing amendments to the city charter that you refuse to swear to uphold when you were sworn into office. Several of the proposed amendments are designed to maintain your control and assert responsibility of city department heads. Zoning changes. We are still not clear on the extent of the proposed zoning changes. The Planning Department is still working on the text for the August 10 Planning Commission meeting. We know that Commissioner Douglas has proposed granny cottages, garage apartments, and multiple housing within the single-family housing in order to destroy what is known as the suburbs and create an urban environment. Let's keep the multiple housing on the mile roads and the half-mile roads. That's worked out very well to date. Again, we are not clear as to how much public input there will be regarding the zoning ordinance changes, or if they will just be jammed down our throat like other things have. I am particularly concerned about the proposed changes on the Woodward Corridor as it affects my subdivision between 12 and 1/2 and 13 mile road. I see I'm out of time. I have more to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right. Anybody else tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard. I have two items to address tonight. Number one, as I said in the prior meeting's public comment, please stop wasting taxpayer dollars in a fight to keep the citizens' initiative petition to save the Royal Oak Veterans War Memorial from being on the November 2 ballot. You should never have moved the war memorial in the first place. When the people rose up in an initiative petition to preserve it as it was, you blew that off and moved it anyway. Now, you're claiming it will be an inappropriate taxpayer expense to move it back if the petition succeeds on the ballot. If the world were just, which it is not, that cost would come out of your personal funds as you recklessly went ahead with your plans, disregarding the history of the memorial's placement and funding. Knowing that you have personal immunity, how can you continue to justify using taxpayer dollars for high-priced external attorneys to fight the circuit court ruling requiring the city to follow its charter procedures? How? The second thing I want to talk about is community support for the nominating petitions for alternate candidates for mayor and city commissioners. They've been overwhelmingly positive. In three and a half short weeks, starting June 25, over 50 circulators collected over 5,500 signatures for the five candidates. Each candidate had over 1,000 signatures on his or her petitions. Of course, only 500 validated signatures per candidate were needed, and the city clerk appropriately stopped counting once that number was reached. But the petitions turned in, and the few that came to us after the 4:00 PM 2C 720 deadline counted up to a much higher number. These five independent candidates are aligned on the values of fiscal integrity, community and neighborhood protection, and openly respecting all residents' participation. Anyone listening in tonight can count on a vigorous campaign season.
Thank you. All right. Who's next? Going once. I see a hand right here in the aisle.
Good evening. So, nice to see everybody's face, all in person again. I want to talk about Agenda 9, the extension of the emergency order.
Do you mind if we can get your name and address?
Pamela Lindell, 409 Inglewood Avenue.
All right. Thank you.
Why? Why this Agenda Number 9 extension, emergency orders, is even coming up? Everything's open. Everything is open. The whole state is open. I expect you will be having open meetings from now on. The entire state, including all of Royal Oak, restaurants, bars, theaters, we're drinking downtown, we're enjoying it, we've got our new park coming. Why do we need to hide in the basement and not have open meetings? There is no reason to have any more Zoom meetings. We have this lovely new facility. I expect we should use it, right? I mean, absolutely. What did we pay all this money for and build this great place if we're not going to be in here, all looking at each other? Open meetings, I expect to see going forward, and I hope to see all of you every two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a hand in the back. Far back.
Erica Sykes, 325 Lexington Boulevard. I'm here tonight to let you know that true Royal Oakers are expecting this commission to comply with the judge's ruling that requires you to listen to your constituents. Residents did all that was required of them per our city charter to place the veterans' proposal on the November ballot, which would allow voters, not politicians, to decide the fate of our war memorial. The real phonies of Royal Oak are all of you, who have been lying about respecting veterans, lying about special interests not influencing your decisions, and lying about why the city is being sued by the veterans. The lawsuit is not about moving the memorial 40 feet or that we don't want the park. The lawsuit is about you violating voter rights afforded by our charter and denying a citizen-led initiative to place a proposal on the ballot. The lawsuit is about how instead of honoring the citizen-led initiative when it met the charter requirements to be considered for the ballot, you instead decided to move the war memorial well before it was necessary in an attempt to thwart the voter's right to decide whether or not it made sense to move it or keep it where it was. The judge's ruling clearly states that you were in the wrong to move the memorial before a vote was allowed to take place, and also notes that you created additional hardship by doing that. But board citizens were allowed to decide if they thought moving the memorial was needed or necessary. With zero regard of your responsibility to follow our charter, you instead decided to impose your will over the people and move the memorial after you knew that the city clerk had verified that true Royal Oakers had collected enough signatures to place a proposal on the ballot that would allow voters, not politicians, to decide whether or not if it made sense to move the memorial. You have forced your constituents to take you to court to do what you should be doing without any prodding. Why are you creating hardships for those you serve? Residents should not have to take you to court to force you to do the right thing and not violate our rights, our charter, or our ordinances. Royal Oak is not your kingdom, and we are not your serfs. You have been told by the court, not once but twice, that your legal opinion that you use to defy our city charter is wrong and illegal, yet you continue to lie to the public and use our tax dollars for high-priced lawyers to defend yourselves and stall the inevitable, which is to place the vets' proposal on the ballot. You are public servants who answer to us. We do not answer to you. Your continuing. Your continued arrogance to defy this law, the law, suppress the vote, and the court order to comply with voter intentions has disqualified all of you to be our leaders. Stop stalling and place the Veterans War Memorial on the ballot and give the power back to the people. Thank you.
Mr. Wolf, that rule is still important. Mr. Wolf. Mr. Wolf, we're not going to have many insurrections here, okay? We're just going to conduct the meeting, the people's business. Mr. Wolf, we'll take a recess, okay? I don't want you to be the cause of that, so let's just make sure we follow the rules and be fair to everybody that comes to public comment. All right, who's next? Mr. Wolf. Yes, ma'am.
Suzanne Chambers, Hudson Street, Royal Oak. I am shocked at the way that you've been treating, after a year and a half, of the public not being able to come and ask questions and get answers, and a man as wonderful and dignified as Mr. Wolf, you would sit up there and humiliate him? Well, I'm sure he isn't humiliated. You attempted to. I find that outrageous, and I agree, we've had beautiful speaking tonight, beautiful, all very substantive. And to think that you would ever think for one minute that you wouldn't have this every week or every meeting that be opened is, you have to give us a reason if that is the case. I would only hope. I didn't know that you even would consider that. So if, in fact, you don't continue to have public meetings, I would like to know what was the point of all this expense? And as far as thanking people for the building, we're the ones that need to be thanked. We're the ones that paid for this. And so I just hope that this is not a beginning of the way that your attitude will be the coming year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But just as a quick reminder to everyone, everyone has three minutes to speak. And we ask, this is a professional place of business here in this building. And in fairness to all 60,000 people that call this beautiful town home, we don't want, as a collective body and as a community of 60,000 people, to have folks that step beyond the rules and interrupt the meetings. So I know we're all back. We're all a little rusty. Let's just make sure that we follow the rules, which is everyone has the right to come up here and speak and be heard, but we can't interrupt the meetings, okay? So we're going to stick with that hard and fast because it's important. All right, who's next? Who's next? All right. Yes, sir, in the corner.
Good evening. My name is John Williams. I live at 17043 Coral Gable Street in Southfield, Michigan, zip code 48076. I've made many public comment calls before. I was just going to kind of sit in the background tonight and just listen and know what was going on. But in March of 2020, my American Legion post swiftly followed by the VFW post sent messages to you folks asking you, please do not move the monument. Plan around it. You had plenty of time to do it. You ignored it. You ignored us. You ignored us again when we asked you again not to do it. I want to thank all these people that are standing up here tonight who formed a coalition of attorneys and private citizens to get the VFW post and the American Legion post together. We presented a petition, signatures, well over the thing to put it on the ballot. You're fighting it still. You're spending lots of money in the city of Royal Oak to fight this, and I'm very upset with it. I want to thank all these people and tell them what they said goes double for me. And I'm going to throw one other thing out that I just kind of recently heard about. My post can't have a picnic in the city of Royal Oak because we have a small beer trailer, and we bring a couple of kegs of beer for the picnic. But you folks have now opened up the Royal Oak, and it's going to include the memorial park, I understand, as a social district. You're going to have open drinking and open alcohol in that park. That's a dedicated area for memorial. It should not include drinking, open drinking. That park has been destroyed now. I hope to hell that it goes back to what it was. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else? Going once. Going twice. All right, we're going to close public comment, bring the meeting back up to this side of the table. And give me a second here to get used to this machine. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone here wish to pull anything off the consent agenda to discuss this evening? Commissioner Cola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. item H, please.
H, okay. Anybody else? All right, the consent agenda now consists of city commission meeting minutes from July 12, city commission special meeting minutes from July 14, confirmation mayoral appointments to the library board of trustees, claims from July 16, July 16 special pay, and July 27, 2021, approval of purchase orders, approval of program year 2021, high-intensity drug trafficking area subrecipient agreement, approval of special event permit, Royal Oak Elks Lodge, 34 cornhole tournaments, proclamation designating August 1 to August 7, 2021, Farmers Market Week, and contract modification, professional engineering services, traffic signal design, community development department request to fill vacancy, and approval of a tentative agreement. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? A motion by Commissioner Purush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion on the consent agenda as presented. Commissioner Macy.
Just wanted to welcome our two new library trustee members and thank Maya and Mark for their service at the library board.
Thank you, Commissioner Macy. Anybody else? Commissioner Cola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is an item on here, a proclamation for Farmers Market Week. I just want to take a moment. I mean, our Farmers Market is so amazing, and this is such a fitting proclamation also. And, you know, this commission, just a couple of weeks ago, we voted to make it a historic place. I mean, this market's here for 100 years. It'll be here for another 100 years. So there's many more Farmers Market Weeks that we'll be celebrating.
And come join us this week. It's open, lots of parking, great time. And if you can't make it, we just got the $20 Farmers Market thing from the school board, where they come in and drop off produce. It was much needed this week, and I recommend you do that as well if you don't have time to visit the market. Anybody else? All righty, well, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the motion passes, and Mr. Cola will hand it to you. Commissioner Cola will hand it to you for item H.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is a grant program from Oakland County. Mr. Filipski is here, and he's hoping he could tell us a little bit more about it. It's quite a cool program. We're going to end up planting 200 trees in Royal Oak in order to raise trees that weren't there before, improving infrastructure. It's an amazing program.
Good evening, Mayor Fournier and commissioners. We are excited about this program. DPS has been looking to find ways to just generally increase the amount of trees that we plant on an annual basis, and this sort of fell in our laps. This is fitting perfect for us. We're excited to note that we were awarded $22,000 approximately. And that makes a big impact, and so by our math, we can plant a couple hundred trees. And rather than just try to plant them any which place, we wanted to make the maximum impact with it. And so we are working with a team of staff to identify areas where these trees will be planted with, obviously, homeowner blessing, but such that it would make a large impact where it's needed most. And we have data about the tree canopy as well as a heat map that gives us some good data to choose where we want to put this. We're still working through some of that right now, the details of that. But in any case, we will be getting this money. We're excited. This fall, trees will be in the ground, make a big impact. And with any luck, we can continue this sort of thing in years to come as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions related to the program as we envision it.
Any questions for Mr. Filipski? He's pretty awesome.
It is.
Mr. Cola?
I just want to say, I don't know how you guys just talk to staff behind you. It's so much harder.
A lot of stiff necks.
So thanks to Oakland County, Chairman Woodward, and staff for paying this grant together. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Cola. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubbuck. All right, discussion on the motion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to item eight, which is the approval of the amendments to Chapter 82 Historic Preservation Ordinance Second Reading. And I believe, Mr. Breck, does this have your name on it?
I'll speak to part of that, so thank you, Mayor Fournier. So this is a second reading of the ordinance, and it enables our organization and the Historic Commission to become a certified local government and provide some advantages that are associated with that and as we come in compliance with the state and federal guidelines. So with that, Carol Schwanger has been liaison to the board, and I don't know if there's anything else that Carol would like to add, but at least I'd like to commend her work for everything that she's done and moving this forward. And this is a significant achievement for our advisory board, so.
Ms. Schwanger? For those of you who don't know, Ms. Schwanger is one of the key essential folks here at City Hall that works out in the city manager's office and is critical to many of the initiatives that we do. And so this is just one of many things that she's worked on, and we're lucky to have her. And if you have anything to add, Ms. Schwanger, we'd love to understand more.
No, these were recommendations made to us by the State Office of Preservation, and these will meet all the federal and state requirements. Now, our ordinance will be up to date as far as they are concerned, and that's the biggest step going forward to become a certified local government. And we're really excited about that. The Historic groups are really excited to start hopefully identifying more properties to become historically designated and to doing projects and community engagement and community events surrounding the historically designated properties because we have so many interesting properties and people in our past, and they help us to preserve our future as well when we study that. So we're very excited, and we're just very blessed and thankful for the city commission's continued support.
Well, thank you, Ms. Schwanger, and thank you to the Historical Commission as well for all the hard work that they do. Just most recently, designating the Farmers Market. I mean, that was a lot of work, and, you know, for most people, you know, homes and things of that nature. But when they see a building like the Farmers Market, I think it's much more relatable how important this commission and the work that they do is. And now the more, you know, how their jobs will be made much easier through this certification, how they can even advance their mission more throughout the community. So that's going to be really great. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Schwanger or Mr. Breck on this topic? All right, well, we'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Purush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion on the motion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the motion passes. This brings us to item nine, which is the extension of the emergency order. Mr. Lael? It might just be on all the time.
Yes, it is. Mayor, thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. This item before you contemplates an extension of the emergency order issued during the COVID pandemic that would allow the commissions and boards from throughout the city the ability to meet remotely. During a discussion that this city commission had on July 12, 2021, there was a desire by this commission to allow each individual board and commission to decide on their own at their future meetings of whether they want to continue to meet electronically or to meet in person, such as what this commission is doing tonight. This puts the decision in their hands and what they feel comfortable with doing. So with that, this motion would propose to allow them to make that decision, and if this commission wishes to proceed to adopt it, that is your discretion tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lael. Any questions for Mr. Lael? Commissioner Dubbuck.
I believe when we discussed this originally a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Lael.
How's that? Is that better? All right. Getting used to the new digs.
Yeah.
I think we kind of had a robust discussion about also just being prepared to respond quickly should the situation change with the new variant and, you know, increasing infection rates.
And that is correct. There was quite a bit of discussion that because of the Delta variant that is increasing, if you watch the news, almost on a daily basis throughout the country, that there would be a need for all the city boards and commissions to be able to go back into meeting remotely should we get to that point. Yes, you are correct.
I believe we were pretty clear. It's the intent of this body to continue meeting in person so long as it is safe to do so, but we're giving ourselves the flexibility should we need to pivot if the situation changes.
That is correct.
There seemed to be some confusion about that. Okay, I'll move for approval. A motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Purush. Discussion. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I just want to point out that, I believe I'm correct, that December 31 is the date that the state's prospective state of emergency extends as well. So we're making our timing consistent with that of the state of Michigan.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was pretty shocking, some of the things, the understandings that we heard at public comment. But just to reiterate a couple of things about this topic. One, like Commissioner Douglas said, the state can make an order at any time, and we need to be prepared to follow that order and use the emergency powers to convert to online meetings if that so is the law in the county or in the state. The second element of it is we have a number of boards and committees that are made up of great public volunteers, resident volunteers. And it's kind of insensitive, as we may not know each personal circumstance. Maybe there's folks that are immunocompromised or people that are elderly, like in the Historic Commission, that may not have the ability to meet in person for whatever reason right now. And, I mean, the simple fact, like Mr. Lael pointed out, and if you pick up a newspaper, there are four models right now that show that the Delta variant will peak in October, and estimating nationally 850 deaths a day to 4,000 deaths a day, depending on vaccination rates. And people's, you know, as they become more lax with, you know, social distancing, mask wearing, et cetera, you know, that's going to increase infection. I heard the comment tonight, "We're open. Everybody's back," or whatever. No, people are vaccinated, and yeah, we're getting together, but we still have to be cautious and careful or we're going to have another terrible situation on our hands, which is going to do economic harm and result in unnecessary loss of life. So having this line up and making sure that we can remain agile and giving our volunteer boards the opportunity to decide what they need to do is the appropriate and right thing to do. Like Commissioner Dubbuck said, it's our intent to meet here so long as it's safe to do so, as long as this board decides to do so. So I just want to clear up any misconceptions that the pandemic is over. I want to clear up any misconceptions that we're trying to, you know, go back to Zoom meetings. We like meeting in person. We like seeing people talking to people, but we're not going to put public safety at risk. We're just not going to do it, especially for our community and for those who volunteer every day on our boards. We want to give and afford them the opportunity to make decisions that are important for their health. So we got to make sure we remain vigilant and educated and informed on what's going on and not recklessly spread information that could be harmful to others. So, all right, any other comments?
All right, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to item 10, Reconfiguration Options Downtown Angled Parking. I see Ms. Donahue. Oh, oh, Mr. O. Donahue. So we like Ms. Donahue. We're like, "Oh, Donahue." All right, well, I guess we'll go down that path.
Mayor of the City Commission, I'm going to go ahead and take this off my... I asked our city engineer to prepare this report. When we were moving forward with our implementation plan for MPS, as we stated at a couple of previous meetings, the angled parking, we could use the MPS meters, but we had limited functionality. You really couldn't take advantage of what I think are the best features of MPS in the angled parking area. We had a couple of areas in the city, and as we were thinking through how to implement it, you know, the city staff actually did a really good job of kind of come up with some innovative solutions for the alleys and some trouble areas. So we have consistency across the entire platform. The one area where we wouldn't have had that is the angled parking on 7th and on Washington. So we asked our city engineer if she could come up with a report on reverse angle parking because that would solve our biggest issue. And she did that, and she also included just to give, she does complete reports, well, parallel parking because that would also solve it, but we're not recommending parallel parking. We're not recommending eliminating any handicap spots. What the police department's recommending is to go to reverse angled parking. A couple of items, this matter was brought to the DDA, and I didn't realize it was going to be brought to the DDA, and there was some conversation there. But I think based on the conversation, there was some misunderstanding. The big issue at the DDA meeting was it seemed, they seemed to think that we wanted to eliminate the street cafes. We don't. We expect the street cafes to be there, and we're planning around... to be there, and we're planning around them. And the other issue, and it was brought up at public comment, is this seems like it's easier for the city, but not easier for the end user. I would say it's the exact opposite. As I stated previous, status quo is the easiest thing for the city. Not doing anything is easy. But what we want to make sure is the people who use MPS, especially initially, have a positive experience with it. We've got a great plan we're working on to kind of drive awareness and make sure everyone understands how the system works. And I would say, like, the best feature is the concierge service, where you can preload your plate in your credit card, and you don't do anything. You park, walk in, leave, and it's just a great feature. You can't take advantage of that on angled parking. A tie for the best feature is if you come back and your meter's expired, you can shore up that meter. You really can't do that on angled parking. It's possible we could come up with a system, but it would be a huge challenge. So the angled parking, it seems a little strange because we're not used to it. But I think our city engineer can tell you, it is actually safer. It was brought up at public comment how it would be less safe for bicyclists having back in angled parking. And I don't think the studies prove that out. Anecdotally, I'm not a biker, but I used to be a runner. And I can tell you, the parked cars pulling out are much more, much more likely to be hidden from view than the cars in the roadway. And I'm sure cyclists would support that. Angle parking is not difficult. It is not as difficult as parallel parking, which we have throughout the whole city, including on Washington Street. It might be intimidating for some folks, and I suppose that's true, just like there's some folks who will not parallel park. Or I guess what I see is people try about 19 times the parallel park and still not get it right, end up on the sidewalk. So this, this solution really makes MPS consistent. And we think it's, in my mind, it's, this is an example of where staff had a problem, staff thought it through and worked out a great solution. And it should be viewed as a net positive. And I think if we were given the opportunity to explain it to the DDA, I think we, they might have. I spoke with one DD member afterwards, and he was, when you put it like that, it makes perfect sense. We got ahold of every restaurant that's on Washington. We spoke to the owners and explained it. And most are positive. Some are a little apprehensive about people backing in, but they think it's a great opportunity. And the worst comment we have is, well, we should at least try it and see how it works. Most of them are overwhelmingly positive of it and think it's an improvement. So I'm trying to think if I that pretty much covers our presentation. But like I said, we're recommending the reverse angled parking, not the parallel parking for Washington. And in the numbers included in your report, those include spaces that are currently occupied by street cafes. So the number isn't exact, but it's close.
Questions for the chief? Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. Will there come a point with the MPS system that we actually are able to eliminate a staff position, a meter monitor person, and actually achieve some ongoing savings?
The meter, the parking enforcement officers aren't, you could, you know, they're part timers. They're not going to, we're not going to, we'll still need them, I guess. We have three people in DPW who are dedicated to the parking infrastructure. And a big portion of that is managing the physical meters. So I, yeah, I believe once we roll it through, there's real savings, whether or not those positions are reallocated or whatever. That's not my decision. But I don't think we, and I'm certain we're not going to need three full-time workers to do that.
So, and second question, if we were to, just hypothetically say, let's leave the head-in parking on Washington and Seventh for the time being while we experiment with the MPS system elsewhere. And then a year from now, say, it's working great, let's flip Washington and Seventh and go to the reverse angle parking, install the bollards that are necessary. Is MPS going to charge us disproportionately more for having to come back and retrofit those streets?
No, they don't charge us. If I'm going to make sure I get this right. If we install new meters, they're entitled to the fees for the first six months. We don't pay a bill on it. Because we have data on these meters, if these weren't installed with MPS meters initially, I don't believe, I believe they could just be installed under the current, it could just be kind of an expansion. But, you know, my recommendation is we're better off experimenting with the back-end parking than having inconsistency with a new parking system. We, some of the things we're thinking about is to getting, you know, is a violation notice. Part of that violation notice is going to include instructions on how to avoid a ticket in the future. And if someone does that, we don't want them to get a ticket in the future. So we don't want them thinking, well, I can just, I put my driver's light, or my plate in, I got my credit card in, I can just pull in and park. I don't have to worry about it if it's not one of those spots. And I think that would drive dissatisfaction a lot more than people who are uncomfortable with backing in. And I don't think there's a lot of people who are that uncomfortable with it. But if there are, the beauty of this system is we have easy access and great instructions on surface lots that are available and our parking structures that are available. So, you know, I'm personally more comfortable with, let's experiment with the back, angle parking, even if we decide to, after a year, if it doesn't work and we switch back, then we have a year of experience with MPS and people are familiar with it.
Okay, thanks. That makes sense. I appreciate it, Chief.
Commissioner Macy?
I think Commissioner Douglas covered most of my questions there. But, so, they have some of these back in, I don't think they're angled, but in Ferndale that I've been to. And what I see when I'm there is that people keep going front end in, and then they come around and they get ticketed for going front end in. So, I mean, this is going to be a big switch. I think you're wrong about people, about how many people don't like to back into angled parking. I think it's a lot of people. I'm one of them. I'm an excellent parallel parker, but back into angled parking, not my thing. Also, my rearview camera's broken, so, just that. But, so, I mean, you'll still have parking enforcement going around checking these stalls for these illegally fronted in cars, yes?
Wait, the way the system works, if someone pulls in and their plate's unreadable for whatever reason, would get an alert. And so if we have a parking enforcement officer available, they can go and check that spot. So if it's in fact a violation, they could issue a violation right there. But if the system can't read a plate, the system can't generate a, you know, the violation. So
So, so if I go front in and rush in and rush out?
Well, I would say it's hard to go front in on angled parking unless you're coming from the opposite side of the street.
Because it's kind of swapped, the other direction.
So, I don't know how Ferndale is, but if you're straight up, it's a little bit.
Okay. And then I guess, I feel confused about where we think the bikers and the runners are, because I think I also disagree with you about which one is safer for them. I both bike and run. And when someone's backing out of a parking spot, they have reverse lights that go on. But when someone is coming straight out of a parking lot, you don't know unless you like, look and make eye contact with the person in the, that's sitting in the driver's. So to me, it feels slightly safer to have, to have them backing out rather than
Well, I guess I consider the angle they're coming at, because when they're backing out, they're coming straight at you. When they're backing, when they're driving straight out, they're moving that way. So it's, yeah, the bicyclist would have more of an option to
Okay, I see what you're saying.
So, and again, that's anecdotal, but I think the traffic engineers will tell you. Maybe she will tell you.
Well, so, it's not a super common parking scenario to have, this reverse angle parking. I'll say that right up front. I think the reason it's considered safer is it's the driver who can see the biker now, whereas before, the biker just had to hope or see the reverse lights and shy away from somebody backing out. This way, the driver is actually seeing what's going on much better than if he was reversing out.
Okay. I bet you were really glad Ms. Donahue would have to bring us some more parking options. I bet that was really tough for you. Well, parking! And then the other question I guess I had for you, Chief, is, so for the, if, I liked Commissioner Douglas's suggestion about doing this as a trial period where we leave these, and then if we decide that if people love MPS so much and are really angry that the system isn't everywhere, we can add it in. Those six months, whatever the trial period is, we would still be collecting the money from those meters, right? Like, that would, MPS did not build this, the money from the Fourth Street into their contract, right?
Well, they, they built it into their contract, but until they put things in the ground, there's no output. So if we said, "We're not going to give you these angled parking areas," I have to confirm that, but I believe we could just say, "That's going to be traditional smart meters. But keep in mind, then I'm coming back to you with a big expensive bill for more smart meters, because this all started when they stopped servicing our current smart meters."
But they didn't stop. They said they were going to, but then they didn't.
That's true. That's true. But they could stop tomorrow. And we do need more smart meters than we have. Now, how, we had planned to allocate our new smart meters to the outlying areas that don't have smart meters. And the idea, well, that's potential expansion. So if we're not using those out there, again, this is a decision. It's not one, we'd have to decide, well, what's better. I get there's some reluctance with MPS, but I think jumping in would be better so it's, it's all the same and it's consistent. I really think, you know, I use the example of, you know, if you're driving downtown and you're going to, let's say, Luigi's, you drive up by Luigi's, and if there's no spots, you slowly circle the block and get wider and wider till you find a spot. And you'll never have to do that. Now you can just pull up and your app will show you the closest spot to Luigi's and tell you how to get there. And it's open. And I think that'll, that'll help a lot with all the extra traffic. All those people who have done that aren't circling the block. So that's where, you know, the, part of the issue we talked about is there's a perception of a parking problem and not really a parking problem. South Washington, those angled parkings are very, very underutilized. There are always open spots there. And people who want, "I want street parking, but I don't," there they are. There's the app, we can show you exactly where they are, but only if they're on the MPS system. So
Well, if there's always open spots on Washington, you don't need this system. I mean
Well, I, well, the whole, excuse me, sorry for interrupting, but the whole, we've been fighting this. There's a perception that we ticket every single person that comes down here. What we found is, we ticket a tiny percentage of the people who don't pay their meters. There's a perception that we have, we don't have enough parking, but we have, no one will go on the decks. And some people still don't realize you get two hours free in the deck. And that's, this is kind of what got us to where we're at today.
Yeah. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think there's a fundamental difference on how you and I are viewing MPS, because I was skeptical to begin with. And so, whereas you're like, "Let's just do this uniformly so that people get used to it." I'm thinking like, "Oh, good, we can save this one little spot that's not MPS." So that, and rather than making people additionally unhappy, which is what I think this is. And I understand what you're saying. If they're not MPS meters, you don't get the benefits of MPS in this section of town. But you also don't get the drawbacks of MPS, if indeed there are some. And then also, I think the reverse, I think the back-end parking lot, back-end angled is not going to be, it's going to be very unpopular and confusing for people. So in terms of consistency, that's something else to consider. I guess I'm not very persuaded by the explanation on the ticket, you know, like, "Oh, you get an explanation on what to do and you'll never do it again." I mean, you can say, except for angled parking, or, you know, I think people will adjust to it. I think there's many things they're going to have to adjust to either way, either if we do it or we don't.
If I could ask a question, from a user's end, what's the downside to MPS? As opposed to a traditional meter? What's the downside? Because MPS meter does everything a traditional meter does and much, much more.
So you're not going to like my answer, because it's a, policeman, policeman's not going to like this answer. It catches me at exactly two hours, if I'm two hours and three seconds, or whatever it is.
Well, I would argue that's a city commission decision to make that rule, that's a parking rule. And I mean, and
But MPS has it as a standard. We can't change it. We can't, we can't. And my understanding is that the MPS meters, that
It's not, it's not accurate. We could change that. We could change that.
Oh, that's news to me.
We're not recommending you do, because the idea is you need those spots to roll over. And
I mean, I understand that. And I'm not saying that I don't want, I don't want us to collect parking. There's also, I mean, the downside, the downside for the users, we've heard from some users, is that there's cameras all over the place, which not everybody loves.
If a police officer walks by your car, it's on camera because he carries a camera wherever he goes. Every time a police car drives down the street, every one of those is recorded. So all those, all that data is already there. We already have it.
But we don't have a policeman standing every eight feet along the sidewalk for all time. I mean
No, but if he drives down the street or walks down the street, their body cams or in-car videos are going to record all that data.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, you just asked for the argument. I'm giving you the argument.
Okay, I had Commissioner Dubak and then Commissioner Collo.
Okay. I'll go the other way with it, Chief. Yeah, I feel like for years, we've been hammering on staff to bring us innovative solutions to fix kind of some of the broken segmented issues we've had with our parking system. And we've been in places where we have in some places coin-operated meters, in some places kiosks that often don't work. And in some places, we have credit cards, in other places, we don't. And it's been, and inconsistent messaging around our decks. And it's been a terrible hodgepodge of the system. And I think if, if MPS was the status quo, and you pitched what we currently have, you would say, "That's crazy. I can't believe you would suggest this current mess of a system." So I think Chief has brought us, and we approved, exactly what we asked for. Now the question is, you know, how do we implement it throughout the city? So, my first question, Chief, does going to reverse angle nix accessible parking spaces?
No.
All right. So if we went reverse angle, we're just reverse angle for everybody, the number of accessible spaces does the same. The only scenario where we'd lose accessible spaces is if we went back to parallel.
Yes.
And I'm not picking up that there's really anyone that's interested in eliminating a bunch of parking one way or the other. So I think parallel's not really on the table. So I don't think we have to sweat losing any accessible spaces on the street there. So why do current lots around the city, and I think it's some of the parallel street parking too, there's signs that say, "No backing in," and there's a fine for backing in?
I think because it's kind of a holdback from when cars used to have a lot longer of a tail end, and you'd hit the parking meter that was back there.
So it's to protect the meter infrastructure?
I believe so. That was
Is that something we've been actively enforcing? I see people, because it's funny, we're talking about people won't want to back in. I see people back in all the time. Not necessarily the angled parking, but the straight parking. Backing into angle is easier than backing into straight. So I see it happening all the time. And I'm always like, "I wonder if those folks are going to take it." Is that something we've been enforcing?
I don't think we enforce the backing in.
I wonder if we need to strip that off our books, if now we're saying back in is actually a good policy. So would it be problematic, and this might be more for the engineer, but if we experimented with a portion of the street, or would that just be too confusing to have some of the street be back in and some of it be the standard? We should go all or nothing? Am I
I would recommend all, I would recommend all one street, both sides. So you could maybe experiment on just Seventh or just Washington. But I wouldn't do one side, reverse angled and one side pull-in parking on the same street. I think that would be way too confusing.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. And on the back, you know, I've not become expert in this by any means the last couple of days, but I was reading up on cities that have done this. And there's, like, many things that we've done, you know, initial kind of reactions, like traffic circles. Everyone hates when traffic circles come in. And then you pull everyone like a year later, two years later. And everyone loves their traffic circles because traffic is flowing so much better. And that seems to be kind of the same pattern that this is having, albeit less widespread. So there's certainly a learning curve there. But I think from a safety point of view, it does make sense, backing in toward fixed motionless objects is safer than backing out into moving traffic that has bikes and cars coming by that you cannot see. And I mean, I think I'm a good driver, but I hate backing out of angled parking. And I mean, I'm I'm I think I'm a good driver, but I hate backing out of angled parking because it's a guessing game and you're trusting people that are flying down the street are gonna stop and let you out. So right now the idea where I'm actually in the flow of traffic and I have to stop and signal, like, it's the same thing, but in reverse, but I'm in a much safer position than having to back blindly on the traffic. So I think there's a give and take there and I'm not saying I'm in love with it, but I understand it kind of cuts both ways. Um, so the choice, chief, is really either to maintain the status quo or incorporate Washington and some other of our streets into the MPS system with all the, all the different bells and whistles.
Well, I guess you have three options now. Um, you could say, don't put MPS anywhere where there's angle parking. That wasn't something we entertained or presented. We could have MPS there with angle parking with limited ability or go with the reverse angled. Um, I I would politely remind the commission that when we first presented this, we wanted to just move forward with street parking, but we were told to try to wrap in surface parking and and the decks, so we were under one, that was a direction we were given, like, you know, get get it all under one umbrella. And that's what we did, we couldn't get the decks, but we got the the, uh, surface lots and I it is, so, um, but I guess that those would be your three options.
So, but there's like a hybrid option where if we remain to pull in frontwise, the system then alerts our parking enforcement that someone's around.
Yes, it 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 pulls in, but it doesn't read a plate. So you could pull in and then you'd have to go to the meter or with the app and pay the meter. The system would sense that there's a vehicle there and would know if the vehicle paid their ticket or not. And if they didn't or paid the meter, if they didn't, it would tell a parking enforcement officer, hey, there's some a violation and then it would go write it. Now the person comes back and says, wait, I want to shore up my ticket. And is it possible to come up with a solution for that? It'd be a hard one, but you know, I I would have be, would have to go back to the drawing board with that one. Where it really is going to hurt is when we're telling people, get the app, use the app, get the cons of your service, you don't have to do anything. And then they pull in and, well, I got a ticket, I thought I didn't have to do anything.
Right.
You know, so.
So that creates confusion in a system where we're trying to create a standard citywide so that everyone knows exactly what to expect when they come park in Royal Oak.
Yes, and in reference to the like the handicap spaces, this system is much, much better for people with any kind of mobility issue anywhere they park. Our our meters are too high, they're they're not user friendly. Um, so, uh, this system gives at every spot a better option, so.
Yeah. Um, okay, those are all my questions, thanks. Mr. Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Commissioner Mace, I wish we could have made these arguments about a month and a half ago because I was, I I did not like the MPS system that, um, but it's the decision that we made and we, it's something that moving forward, I'd rather do a all-in approach of, I I want everyone to share the benefits of the system and not have a system where it's a hodgepodge where there's some meter parking, not everyone can, I mean, to me, the biggest benefits MPS hands down, I mean, chief, I know you like to share your service, I know you like to find in the spot. I think the fact that you could not get a ticket is hands down the best feature that this has and I I think that should be available to everyone. Um, so, uh, chief, you know, one thing that we did talk about though, we do have restaurants that, you know, you mentioned Luigi's earlier. Luigi's has this awesome tent out right now. Um, across Street Lily's has another great tent that spans multiple, multiple spots. Has there been thought about a long-term solution? Um, you know, these tents go to April right now. Have you had any conversations or thoughts about what happens next with these?
What happens to the tents?
This, those, those spots in particular, do you need direction from the city about what we're doing, what our desire is with the tents or what's, what do you need on that?
Well, I I think ultimately the city is going to have to make a decision on, do we want sidewalk or street cafes as a permanent thing and and that's probably something that within the DDA should get resolved. We are making allowances, assuming there'll be street cafes where there's currently street cafes and we'll, whether or not they'll be there year round or if we knew they'd be there year round, that'd be great, but, um, we assume they're going to be there six months out of the year. As as we roll out our implementation plan.
Okay, so, um, is it safe to say then that at some point this, you know, we need to start making, I mean, experience in April, you know, April is not that far away. Sailing up to start making decisions on or, you know, get the DDA involved in this next phase of decision making?
That, yes.
Okay.
And and I mean, if if there's some there, they they would, we wouldn't ask them to remove it just so we can restripe it. We'd restripe it once it's gone, but maybe do the rest of the street.
Okay, so we won't be metering those today or with the first phase of this?
Well, that, we might meter them, but we might not restripe the street yet.
Gotcha.
So then if they move out, we just have, those would be not available parking until we get that issue resolved.
Okay. Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, like I said, I, um, I I think that in my, my personal opinion here is to move forward with an all-in option to see if it's working and we can always, if, correct me if I'm wrong, in a year we could paint the streets again if needed and go back to a existing parking system.
We could do that and I, you know, I guess in my mind, that's a better option because we don't want a hiccup with the rollout of the new parking system. Be i- if we decide this backing doesn't work, then once people are used to MPS and understand it, it would be easier to message that.
Thank you, chief.
Monica, or Commissioner Hunt?
Um, thank you for this presentation. Um, I understand that you aren't recommending the parallel parking system and it doesn't appear that there's much support for it, um, here. But, um, is there, for purposes of understanding, is there consideration of a model or, um, an idea or example of how you can maintain the accessible parking spaces by using or with using the parallel parking spaces?
Well, the be because the angle parking, you can fit a lot more spaces in in a shorter space, we were just going to reverse them and keep the handicap. If you go to parallel, you know, you if you did, you could still designate one of those, I suppose, a handicap. Yeah, you. I see I'm getting over my skis.
So the, when we brought up the idea of accessible on-street parking, I don't know if it was a year or two ago, we looked at, should we put it in the parallel spots and/or the angled spots? Um, with the whole idea in mind that these are not truly accessible spots, the the road may not be sloped appropriately. There's not always a ramp right there. Um, it's more that they're convenient spots more than accessible. Um, and I think the decision was ultimately made to stick with only angled spots because you could provide that nice five-foot required landing outside the vehicle. And it was easier to get somebody, if they did need a ramp, it was easier to get them, um, to the nearest sidewalk ramp and up. As opposed to a parallel spot, you might have to step up onto the curb right there or walk aways. Um, so that was the decision made at the time, which is why in the memo I said, you know, if we went to parallel, we probably would stick with that recommendation um, to to not have any, uh, designated handicap spots on the street.
Thank you.
Sure.
I had a few, oh, Commissioner Bruce.
Sorry, I didn't read, excuse me, didn't raise my hand fast enough. Um, I'm comfortable, not the idea of backing into a parking space, definitely. Um, I cannot in the present time back into my own driveway, let alone into somebody else's parking space. But, um, but be that as it may, I I really think that this proposal, uh, is persuasive in the fact that it does um, give oncoming cars as well as runners and bikers who are traveling in the same direction an opportunity to see what is going on with with the the parked cars and cars that are attempting to park. Much better than the current system where you're backing out of a parking space with two big Ford F-150s on either side of you and you cannot see oncoming traffic until you're halfway out into the street. And that has happened to me frequently and it's terrifying. Um, so I really think from a safety perspective, as as much as this is going to make people uncomfortable because it's new and it's different, I think from a safety perspective, the data is there and and the 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 policy is is firm in that regard, that it's a much safer system. Um, and I agree with with everyone else at the table that returning to parallel parking is is not appropriate. We lose too many spaces and it just doesn't work any better than what we've got now. So, um, I'm I'm willing to give this a shot. I really think it can work if it's, if especially if the messaging is out there and the communication, uh, is out there uh, to to the community and to people who are coming into the community that this is new, they're going to recognize that it's new when they can't pull into a a space nose first anymore. They're going to have to angle in and it will take some getting used to. Um, but I really think in terms of safety, it is the best way to go. And we really think our goal is to maximize the benefits of the MPS system as much as possible. And I think that losing those many spaces, um, on Washington by not doing this is a significant, is a significant amount. And so I think for those reasons, uh, I support this recommended change.
Just had a few questions myself as well. Um, probably more tactical, but, you know, so I fully suspect that over time, a change like this, people that live in the community or visit the downtown very often will become accustomed to it, be able to use it and actually like it and it'll be better for them, 100%. But we are a community that attracts a lot of people from a lot of different areas. Um, and we, as much as we have a regular patronage of our downtown, we have, which is exciting and great, a lot of folks coming on vacation, visiting, maybe they go to the zoo, they come downtown. And so how do we, um, you know, 10% of the people have never been to downtown or never parked on Washington. How do we notify them or show them or market clearly that this is reverse angle parking? Because we're not necessarily dealing in the context of Royal Oak, we're dealing in the context of every other parking arrangement they've been exposed to over 20 years of driving.
Uh, well, I think the, um, the most effective way is with with signage and with the understanding that the only people who can really even do it are for coming from the opposite side of the street. So if they're pulling in, the hopefully they'll figure it out. I mean, it's, uh.
Is there an option for MPS to say, I don't read a plate, beep beep, make the thing? Because you said you could put messages on the meter, so can they say, hey, it appears that your car, this is a reverse angle parking, please repark your car?
Um, whether or not they're, whether or not they, it it can do that, I don't know, we'd definitely look into that. Um, keep in mind the, as part of this system, as the meters roll out, the first month of any new meters, the violations are warning letters. And so we think that would be a great opportunity to explain, this is how you don't get a ticket. And it's, it's not even your first ticket, it's your first warning letter, but, um.
To your regulars, but then anybody that comes two or three years from now.
Yep, and if someone comes in and and if there's a one-off and, uh, we're even if there's unique circumstances that someone explains to us and we have the ability to resolve those tickets to some, you know, to some degree also, so.
And then the other question I have, and this is just from my professional experience, um, with cameras and parking technology. Um, what's the reason why they wouldn't be able to install cameras, you know, on the light posts to be able to activate when someone pulls into the spot, take a picture of the plate and process it through the system all on the same wire, especially if there's, it's wired on the other side? It seems to me that you could have one camera monitor. So when someone pulls in, the meter acknowledges that a person pulled in and then, this is the safety considerations aside, I'm just saying if we kept the the normal pull-in, pull-forward constellation where it sends a signal to the camera, the camera looks, takes a picture, shuts off, sends a message to MPS with the license plate and everything is copacetic. Is there a reason why that?
I I can't tell you other than we've talked with them and they they can't do it. I think if they could, they have an incentive to be able to do that currently. So if there was a way for them to do it, I'm I'm guessing they would, but I, I, okay, this is, this is beyond my expertise for sure.
Or or cost money.
I I don't think it would be a money thing because the, well, I I guess I don't know, like, I'd just be speculating, so.
And then, um, I mean, the other thought on this would be shoring up tickets. You know, in the event that, let's just say that, um, this, you know, doesn't go forward and it remains the same system. Um, you know, is there a way where our parking enforcement officer puts the plate in and then that sends a message? I guess this is more a question for MPS, sends a message to the person with the app, says, hey, you didn't pay for parking. You know, the meter noted, you pulled in at 2:52 PM, would you like to add it? Yep, I mean, I know it's not ideal and then, but at least it gives them the opportunity to not get a ticket if they made the mistake of thinking that it was like a meter on Main Street or something of that nature.
Um, I I I don't know, I don't know how we'd go that about, we could, we could talk about that with them if you want, but I don't know how we'd.
Well, maybe, we'll see how things go tonight, but there's some workarounds out there, I think, that are possible, one way or the other to at least, it shouldn't be an all or nothing. I mean, depending on however this goes, we have to have mitigating measures to keep people happy, not just on the system side, but also if it if it moves forward where we do have a change that it's, there's a campaign there because I think, one, people are going to have anxiety with it and two, um, you know, uh, you're you're going to have folks coming in and forgetting or new to town and you're going to have that whole thing. But I do agree with what Commissioner Bruce said, backing up, you know, I have a small car right now and it's funny you say between two Ford F-150s because I think I was in pretty much like between a van and another thing and another Ford F-150 coming down Washington and I'm backing out slowly and then there comes the horn. It's like, I I don't know, man, I can't see, you know, I'm just letting you know I'm backing now, hopefully there's no toddlers on the loose. Um, so I see and understand the safety issue and and I think that as a, as much anxiety that comes with backing into that spot, to me, there's just as much anxiety that I get backing out of the current situation because you have no idea what's coming and that, that's what, you know, I hate about about it. Um, and I think, you know, the safety stuff is is proven, but, you know, what is in the back of my mind is, you know, we're right about the perception, we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. If we put this forward, it makes the system really good and it doesn't matter if you're a consistent user, which are the people we want to serve, the people that come to our downtown, spend money every day. You know, um, those are the people that we want to make sure have the best and comfortable and 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 wholehearted experience. Um, uh, but then if you make this change, then people are going to complain about the reverse angle parking, I hate it. You know, it's a problem, um, you know, so you get dinged no matter, so no matter what you do, whatever decision you make, of course, it's not going to make everybody happy. Um, but I will say that, um, you know, part of me in the back of my mind is like, you still have people that think the pandemic's over. You still have people that think vaccines have microchips, you know, you still have people that can't figure out how to put a mask on early part of this pandemic, you know. Am I confident they're going to know how to back into a parking spot at an angle? I, you know, I have faith in about 70% of humanity, the other 30% I question, so I don't know, you know, if we're going to have that sort of, um, you know, situation where it makes sense on paper, everything's good, but then, you know, 10% of the people can disrupt everything. Uh, so that's just one thing to consider. Um, and I think I had Commissioner Dubac.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so just a couple of other things, if we were to move forward with this and I feel like there's maybe some some support for experimenting with it and I think on a on a trial basis, like a year or something where we would then come back and revisit how it's working. Um, I mean, signage needs to be extra, like, can we find out if other cities have rolled this out? I mean, even a stencil in each individual spot, like a little icon of a car, like park this way, like something that really just triggers for people how it's supposed to go. Um, and then, you know, could we or the DDA prepare flyers or palm cards for restaurants, retailers and other businesses to share with customers on the impacted streets, you know, well in advance of the rollout, like effective such and such date? This is going to be how this goes, this is how, you know, what the etiquette of reverse angle parking is. I would think we can make that part of a communications.
We are working very hard on, um, the communications and and rollout strategy. We're working with a PR firm with the, hired by the DDA and to ensure, um, everyone's up to speed, we're trying to take advantage of some festivals we got coming up to do some messaging and, um, we, everybody's on board with making sure the messaging is right and, um, that looking at these things as positive improvements because it is our effort to make it as easy as possible on the end user. That that's our goal because we, I I really believe that it is, I think people are going to like it. I think, uh, the system is is a much, much improved to what we have and and, um, so I think we should all be excited about it.
I would, I think like Mr. Briggs said, when we first, uh, you know, approved the contract, this is a. I think like Mr. Briggs said, when we first approved the contract, this is a modern digital solution to replace kind of our archaic ways of doing things. It's just been, you know, a constant point of headache contention for visitors and, and the city. So I think we're going the right direction with this. Last thing I'm wondering we could consider and maybe for Ms. Donahue, I don't expect you to have the answer right now, but I'm wondering if we look at other cities that have done this, is there any value if we nixed, you know, maybe one spot per block to make the spot slightly wider? Does that make people more comfortable or is that maybe a best practice with reverse angle parking?
Yeah, actually MDOT has a designation or a designated standard for reverse angle parking, which actually requires that you do 10-foot wide stalls instead of the standard nine, sometimes eight-foot stalls. And then the accessible spaces are even wider, I think they're 12-foot just for the stall itself. And that is why I think we lost, what was it, eight, a net of eight lost parking spots because they all had to get just a little bit wider for the reverse angle. So I think we've accounted for that little extra fudge room that you need.
Okay, excellent. All right, well, I guess I will go ahead and move to approve that the, which resolution was it here? First resolution recommending angled, reverse angle parking be installed on the designated streets with the caveat that, you know, we track data and revisit it a year after implementation. And also that staff works with the DDA to establish a robust communications plan prior to the date that the change takes place.
Motion by Commissioner Dubb. We have a second by Commissioner Bruce. All right, discussion. Commissioner Macy.
Actually, I thought of another question for the chief, sorry, chief. So I mean, at the moment, we don't have meters on handicap spots downtown.
Correct.
Correct. And would, we still would not. Okay, thanks. And then I just wanted to point out, so this idea of doing the trial, this where we install it and then check it in a year, if we do decide that we don't like it a year from now, we have to re-incur these costs to repaint, but also then we do have to buy the smart meters that we're, you know, now we would not necessarily have to buy. So if we, if we decided to undo it, I just wanted to make that small point about that.
I'll just add, maybe that's not necessarily true because you can use the existing meters that MPS would install. You would just have to use the parking enforcement officer strategy versus the automatic strategy versus, so you wouldn't have to necessarily switch over all the meters to the dumb meters as we call them. You would just use the, but that would, and the point is, is that that would lead to confusion for the app users and that you, you know, you'd have dissatisfaction. So you're either going to have dissatisfaction there or dissatisfaction with the people putting it in reverse. And then I think after the trial, not trial period, but after time, we'd evaluate it and see who's angrier more, I guess.
Who's more happy?
Yeah, who's, who's more happy? And these aren't reverse, and I heard these aren't reverse angle spots, they're luxury spots according to Ms. Donahue because they're wider, right? Just like that Seinfeld episode, ooh, luxury lanes.
I will not go on record saying that.
I'll just also add too, I mean, to put it into context, and I'm going to throw this out there and I would just be amazed if you guys knew the exact answer, but how many parking spots do we have in the downtown? I mean, it's like 5,000.
Street parking's like nine, just over 900. I think we, gosh, I had it the last meeting, there's I think 600 surface lots, spots and then, yeah, but I think it's around five, just under 5,000 total spots. Sounds about right.
So we're talking about of all the parking in our downtown, we're talking about less than 3% of the spots being impacted by this in order to, you know, so we're not flipping a switch and turning the lights out on something massive here, although it does impact Washington in particular. And I think that we have the ability to reverse course if it turns out to be a dismal failure in the businesses and everybody have an issue with it. But based on the trust of the conversations you've had, Chief O'Donohue, it sounds like the businesses are a little bit maybe even more bold than the general public on it and, but also still, you know, we have concerns and I think the way the motion has been put out there, you know, we have the ability to change course if it, if it doesn't work. But we're talking about, you know, we're not talking about all of our spots downtown. We're talking about, you know, let's put it into context, you know, less than 3% of our spots, 10% of the ones downtown, obviously 100% on Washington, you know, for angle parking. But, you know, if we don't try things, if you always do what you've always done, you always get what you always got. So I came into this meeting actually really uncomfortable, you know, but based on hearing comments from my colleagues, I'm a little bit more willing to accept this, although my faith with people on the road with road rage and everything else going on, I sometimes question people's abilities and desire to follow rules, but you know, like I said, we can always repaint and go back to what we had, so I'm willing to try. Commissioner Collo.
Mr. Eric, I wish you would have spoken first because I also quickly jumped behind an idea to find a way to make the technology work at the existing parking, but once again, I think that's a conversation that just is far too long and nothing we could solve with the sale, it's speculative on what might be able to happen and it's not a solution that exists today. You know, one thing that I think that, that I brought up when I was speaking with the chief, but one thing you do need really consider is the outdoor cafes and the street cafes. I mean, it's part of what makes world very vibrant right now. It's part of the amazing downtown. I mean, we are a destination whereas Birmingham, for instance, has decided to get rid of their street cafes this year. We've kept them and we give people the, an option to eat downtown. We've made patios where they didn't exist in the past. So I think part, I don't know if it needs to be part of a resolution, but I would really like to give direction tonight, to ask the DDA to come up with a recommendation for next year on what we're doing with street cafes, because it does kind of tie to this parking system and when we strike these and when meters go in.
So Commissioner Collo, what I, it's a little bit off topic from the motion that's on the table, but what I will tell you is you probably would get support here. So for the next agenda, if you wanted to get two other commissioners to, you know, second and third, that to add it as an agenda item to talk about it, you probably would get it. So yeah, it's getting close to the fall. And by the way, these 134 spots don't include the spots that are already currently being, 134 includes spots, got to get my order of operations correct here, includes spots that are currently being used by like Luigi or Lily's. So, you know, impact from T today, you know, could even be less than those percentages we talked about significantly less. Okay, so now I feel a little bit more comfortable too. Okay. But Commissioner Collo, I like where your head's at, but I think a good opportunity to do that would be ask for it to be on the next agenda if you want, then staff can prepare some, some information ahead of time and scope it out, that would be a good thing. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Dubb?
Yeah, just one last thing, I want to reiterate what the chief said, which is, you know, the easy thing to do here would be nothing, maintain the status quo. But we've really been encouraging staff to bring us innovative ideas to solve some kind of like our long-term pain points. And this is like the third proposal we've seen in, say, the last six months where staff are really bringing us things that are exactly what we've been asking for. And it's, it's changed and there'll be a growing period and, and, you know, some growing pains, but I think ultimately this is going in the direction that I think people have been asking for, a system that makes sense and is really customer oriented. So thank you, chief and Ms. Donahue for bringing this forward. I think, I think this is going to be really positive for, for our city and for everyone that wants to visit.
All right. I don't see any other hands, so we will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right, the motion passes. All right. Well, good luck, Chief O'Donohue. We know where to send all complaints now. Set it to the O box, not the, not the D box. All right. Approval of amendments to chapter 515 Parks and Public Recreation Facilities Ordinance, first reading. All right, is this Mr. Twing, is he here or is Mr. Filipski going to handle this one?
It's Mr. Twing, but I can start out the conversation. So, so with the implementation of the, the social district, it's brought to our attention that the, there is a restriction and these two areas have been identified as common areas that are within the social district. So bringing this forward for your consideration to amend the Parks and Recreation, Recreation Facilities Ordinance, but now that Mr. Director Twing is in our presence, if there is anything else that I didn't cover in that, it's pretty straightforward, you know, what, what this entails. Now, with that being said, keep in mind that the, the social district was approved through the month of September this year. So predicated that, that if this continues on, that, you know, this would be necessary or if this is just a standalone feature, if eventually the, the social districts go away. So that's just one of the consideration to be aware of when considering this, this possible ordinance. But with that, defer to the director if there's anything else that I didn't describe that's important for your consideration.
I think you, I think you covered it pretty well. The last part, as, as the commission does, does know, you did approve it through September 30th of, of this year. The act, the statute actually lets the social districts go through December 31st of 2024. The intent of this wording is that if at any point the city commission dissolves or removes the social district, there's no further action necessary. The intent of the wording was to say, while one exists, there is an exemption in place.
Mr. Twing, I have a question. So under this, how we have this built up, the ordinance here would, this amendment would allow for the ability to design, so in a future, let's say after September, we want to come back and we say, okay, well, you know, we want to tweak the boundaries of the social district, still exclude the park or exclude parts of the park or whatever it may be. It's just allowing the fact that we don't have to go through these ordinance changes if the commission sees fit to have the social district extend into part of the park, some of the park, all of the park, whatever it may be. It's just making sure we don't have to go through a second hurdle, correct?
That's, that's correct. The intent here is to not have to go back and amend the Parks and Parks Facilities Ordinance, just amend the social district. If you change the common areas, if you dissolve it, there's no need to go back and modify this ordinance.
Right. And to be clear, it's not going to impact the Centennial Commons because it won't be done by September 1st. I mean, we can hope and pray, but you know, it's, it's, you know, we're targeting a end of October timeline anyhow, so. Okay, any other questions from Mr. Twing? Sorry, I just jumped out of the gate and asked a few. Commissioner Macy?
Actually, I have a question, maybe first or they all. So I don't know if you're aware of this, we now have a summer league baseball team in Memorial Park, the Lepicons. There's, there's beer sold there. If we're fixing this ordinance, should we fix this ordinance or is, or are they included under the nonprofit charitable civic educational religious organization?
The exception that's listed under paragraph B is somewhere where you have authorized the sale of, to these different types of entities, including nonprofit charitable civic educational religious, but they have to be within these two areas, which is Royal Oak Arena, the Royal Oak Golf Club. So if they are dispensing at a different location, it would basically violate the general prohibition in A, there's no exception for that.
Like the mayor has something to say.
I always have something to say. But I think the chief may want to interject here as well with some of the liquor license provisions. Permit and they are a charitable organization that the alcohol is approved by.
Okay. So, so is there any reason to, I'm just, while we're changing this ordinance, if that's going to be something that's ongoing, do we want to have to have a special event permit for this or do we want to include or the memorial, whatever park that is, Memorial B or one, two or three? See what I'm saying? Like right now, they have to have a special event permit for that, but they would fit under this if we said Royal Oak Arena or the Royal Oak Golf Club or Memorial Park in the baseball field area B or whatever it is.
I would, it's not hard because all these special events moving forward now can be administratively approved and we have to sign off on an MLCC permit because they're a charitable organization anyway, so that isn't hard.
So it doesn't do you any good.
It's not extra work. It doesn't really change for us for anything, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I, I am a little concerned about Eagle Plaza. That seems like it's going to be a really convenient place for people to be able to sit down and drink. And I just, I expressed some reluctance when we approved the social districts. I do support them, I like the idea, but I just feel like the chief's going to have to have his crew be especially vigilant there. I mean, you know, at what point do we determine there are too many people drinking in Eagle Plaza? Chief?
When they become a problem, that's when we determine, how's that? We haven't had any issues with the social district yet or it's new, so, but we will keep an eye on it and if, if we're seeing problems, we can report back and we will report back that we're having some issues, whatever they might be.
And would we have the ability to retract this from Eagle Plaza? I mean, can, can we unwind this as easily as we're winding it?
I think we can redraw the, redraw the borders.
There's different ways that you can do that. One would be by, as the mayor suggested, redefine the, the district to exclude these and by, by that action, then that exception could not come into fruition. So that's one way. The other way would be to come forward with another ordinance amendment as well as, well, another ordinance amendment that would eliminate that exception. So there's, those are the two ways that you can approach it.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'm satisfied.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Douglas. I think that's a thoughtful, you know, prediction of what could happen. I think though, you also have Eagle Plaza, for example, right in the middle of downtown and you have people out there for summer concert series or they're waiting to pick up their sushi and they have a beer and they're with their kids and I think there's more risk of making somebody feel unwelcome or like they're a felon if we come after them if it's, you know, totally banned versus, you know, a bunch of, you know, hooligans or, you know, folks that are up to no good, you know what I mean? I think there's always a risk, but I think the risk probably favors and lends towards people feeling like, wait a minute, you know, I made an honest mistake, you know, versus, you know, a group of folks collecting and causing an issue. I think that our, our PD could be there in a heartbeat if that was an issue versus, I think then we have to enforce something and, you know, some mom out there with her three kids having a beer while they're waiting for takeout, you know, running up and down the hills, you don't want to come down on that person, so.
And that's not what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I think enforcement would be, if there's a problem, any sort of rowdy behavior, I would hope, and I think we'll learn in September too, and that's actually Eagle Plaza will be open, you know what I mean? We'll have some experience with it, so it'll be a good test case to see what, what comes out of it. And if it is a magnet for issues, then I'm fully support drawing it out. And I think too, we have to consider once the park opens as well, you know, when we redraw these social districts, what it means in the park, you know what I mean? I still have a little bit of reservation on it, just in general, I think we should give ourselves, fix the ordinance to give ourselves the options, because just like Mr. Leal said, you can always redraw boundaries as a matter of policy. But also too, you know, there might be certain areas in the park that we don't want to have people, you know, in the social district, like around the War Memorial, things of that nature. We may want to be a little bit more jurisprudent as far as how we draw those districts and things of that nature and, I mean, we'll take that when it comes, but worst case scenario, none in the park, best case scenario, we have a plan that works for everyone.
All right, any, Commissioner Macy? We have a motion by Commissioner Macy, second by Commissioner Collo. Any further discussion on the topic? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? All right, the motion passes. Well, goodness gracious, it is 9:18. We are at the bottom of our agenda on our inaugural meeting here in the new city hall. Notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our neighbors, friends, family and fellow citizens that live in Royal Oak, I will certainly entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Bruce, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion on this motion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned. First meeting in this building is in the books. Thank you for everyone for coming out tonight and we'll see you next time.